So, as you know, what's happening on a national level is playing out down to the tribes. And I think we should, and it's also suggested by Councilman Poyer, we discuss it right away. So we'll go with the formalities here. We'll discuss it openly because I think it needs to be heard publicly on what we're, we need to do. Right now, we need to assure the people that we are working on things. And I also want to share my opinion and what I've been telling people out there who have concerns in moving forward with this new administration. And so when we get to that, I'd like to explain what I've been telling people. And what we'll probably all have to brainstorm here and throw ideas out there, draw down money, whatever we can, to see if our programs are capable of going, lasting throughout the months, maybe month, until we can find out more information on what's going on. Because right now, everybody's in a panic, and I don't think we should fall for that. We need to wait and let it play out. In the meantime, take action or take some steps, measures, to make sure our programs are safe, our people are covered. So we'll get into that discussion here in just a bit. So I'd like to call this meeting to order at 10:27. Councilman Little Thunder, can you give us an opening prayer? Oh, Opila. You know, I'd like to say the words encouragement this morning. Because I think it's important that, especially in the beginning of this administration, it's very, very important that we work together. We need to unite at all levels, all the way down to our communities and our districts. We need to start helping each other out. We need to start encouraging each other, pulling our resources together. Because this administration is going to be a tough one, where we're going to, I believe that we'll be constantly guessing on the next steps to ensuring that our tribes are taken care of. And we need to counter, I hate to say that, but countermeasure some of these things that are coming on the table. And we need to start having some of our council here get involved in Washington to advocate for tribes. And I know the first one here is National Congress, American Indians is coming up here. So we listen to see what other tribes are doing, what are they pulling, what kind of information. At these big convention meetings, they do have guest speakers. You'll see some of them, President Trump's cabinet, or they, some of them are guest speakers. So it's good to sit down and listen. I always attend those morning sessions, you know, and listen to all the speakers and to what they have to say. It's very interesting, I find it, because it affects our tribe. Not only our tribe, but the Great Plains region. So I encourage a council to get involved in those kinds of meetings. We all, we need you, we need all of you be watchdogs for our tribe. And let's not react. Let's just sit back, let's analyze, bring it to the table, and figure out how to protect our programs, how to protect our people. But the first thing we need to do is, we need to, I know we all have differences. There's 21 of you, and it's really hard to get all of you on the same sheet of music. But I do think, you know, I always pray about, you know, this new administration and how we can start changing things to work together. We all have differences, but you got to put those differences aside for our people, you know. The things I noticed is that one district has issues, they want to also move forward. But like I mentioned with the Crazy Horse Planning Commission, when we meet, is that let's share our ideas. You know, if one district's stronger than the other, then lift them up. Show them what you're doing, how can they better their district. All nine districts are different. Some have financial resources, others don't. I know when we started with these multipurpose buildings, and I was a district president, that's what I tried to share, is make sure we're all on the same page. And if one of the district chairs had problems with their plan, we tried to help them, throw them ideas on how to get around those ideas, or use your ideas. That's how we need to start thinking as a tribal council. Share your ideas with other councilmen, but for the good of the people. For the good of the people is the key word. Because that's what we were elected to do. Sometimes we lose focus of that. We got to put all these personal issues, this jealousy thing, and this power control aside, and start thinking how we can work together in the leadership of this government, tribal government. And that goes for our directors too. Those directors need to start sharing their information to help each other. So it's at all levels, we need to come together. Why? Because you look at the national news, it is happening. They put a pause on a lot of things just last night, federal funding and stuff like that. Does that affect Indian country? You'll find out, we'll have Jennifer Hughes on us later on, to give us an update on what she's uncovering. I've been on the phone with her all morning, talking about these issues. And other tribal leaders, they're reaching out, asking, what are we going to do? What are you doing with your tribe? So things like that. But we got to remain strong, done on that treaty. That's what I've been telling the other tribes. So with that, I encourage you to work with each other and do the best you can for the people. Oh, Opila. Secretary Roca.
Good morning, tribal council, executive board members, the public. Blaine Little Thunder. Ronald Randall.
Here.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Here.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior. Bo Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Here.
Troy Little.
Here.
Lyle Weston.
Present.
Anna Halverson.
Present.
James Cross is going to be late. Jillian Spotted Bear.
Present.
George Dreamer Junior.
Present.
Richard Greenwell. Tyler Lunderman is excused. David Poyer.
Here.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston is excused. Jackie Sears.
Here.
Don Ray Gossberg. David Kelly.
Present.
Garfield Steele. Craig Dillon is excused.
Go ahead, Councilman Standing Soldier.
We really need to look at the approval of the agenda, because I know you stated we don't need to panic, but there's some things that are going to happen today that are probably really going to affect the Lakota Nation, as well as the whole United States. So we really have to think if we want to find out where we're standing, Jennifer Hughes needs to get on the phone now and give us what she knows. Because if we don't act, I think there's a 3 o'clock deadline. And we need to really have a discussion on where we want to go and what actions we need to take to protect some of our programs.
I totally agree. That's why we're here. Let's get through the formalities and we'll get her on the horn. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Davey.
Well, the next thing on the agenda is approve the agenda, but we need to change that for discussion now. So how do you want to handle this? Because that's the next thing. What Norman is saying, we deal with the issue now rather than start going into the agenda.
Okay, we need a motion to insert to, okay. So we have, motion, can you re-
Motion to take care of this, I don't know how to, shouldn't be emergency, but it's emergency on our funding anyway. Federal freeze, that's going to happen.
Okay, so motion to move the executive orders to the front of the agenda? Okay. So we motion by Councilman Poyer, second. Second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Call for the vote.
Mr. Poyer, just for clarification, so your motion is to move the executive orders to the top of the agenda regarding the federal funding freezes?
Call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yeah.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior. David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Don Ray Gossberg.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
So, well, this is, you know, I talked with Jennifer, in the meantime, can we get her on the horn, maybe Cora and all them? Okay. Okay, so we'll add the two thirds. You had a question? Go ahead.
So that was my question was, is that all we're going to do is talk about this issue and not deal with the rest of the agenda?
No.
I mean, because there's pretty much nothing we can do but just talk in circles, which we always do anyway. And a lot of the work has to come from Dean and Cora and the people that are responsible for making jaw downs. I mean, there's pretty much nothing else we can do. And then we could see, like you said, we got to sit back and see what's going to be affected, and then take a better approach instead of jumping. We're jumping, not knowing what's going to be affected. I asked this question, is not benefit's going to be affected? And people are saying yeah, some are saying no, so we don't know.
Yeah.
And I think we probably going to need another meeting soon to address all of this stuff, to see what's affected and how we can deal with it. But right now, it's like, we're not too sure. So I'm okay to sit here and listen to Jennifer Hughes, and listen to know what she knows about it, but pretty much everyone else is just going off of everything we're seeing on social media and whatever. So my question is, are we dealing with the rest of the agenda, or are we just dealing with this issue?
We're going to start off with this issue and then continue on.
Okay, that was a good clarification. So I got a two-thirds agenda item that I'm going to run under my district, and it's, and I took it to finance already, and it's to waive the tariff fees on our, on the new youth community building. So I'll make that motion, the two-thirds add on the agenda. Well, I was looking on finance and I didn't see it, sorry. Okay.
Okay, so go ahead, Councilman Jumpin Eagle.
So I have one from Medicine Root District. It's a resolution of the Medicine Root District seating our newly-elected executive board, so I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jumpin Eagle, second by Councilman Steele. Question, Davey?
Does the districts have to be two-thirds on, because they're already on the agenda? Each district, do we have to do that?
Well, are they here?
Well, I mean, he has a resolution, so it's listed as districts, and I thought it would just, the way we ran before is districts, if there was districts, then we brought it on during that time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, if that's, I would draw my motion then, but I do have one for education.
Right, okay.
You just, sorry, you just needed to mention it for the record that you did have items from the district, because I didn't receive them until a few minutes ago.
Okay. I have an item from our district.
Okay, so one from education is resolution of Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the amendments to the American Horse School Policy and Procedure Manual, 2023-2024, adding provisions for reasonable accommodations and grievance procedures. Motion, the two-thirds.
Okay, motion by Councilman Jumpin Eagle, we have a second. Second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Don Ray Gossberg.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Sixteen, unanimous motion carried. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Chair, finance has three items that need to be two-thirds on.
Okay.
The first item is ordinance of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe amending ordinance number 2449, December 31, 2024, approving the general fund budget to rescind approval of the funding a resource office in 2025 general fund budget.
We have motion.
It's to add it to the, to two-thirds on, to rescind the resource office.
Motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Randall. Call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior. Jeremy Rosales.
No.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
No.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
No.
David Poyer. Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Don Ray Gossberg.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Let's recognize Councilman Cross and Councilman Little White Man at 10:50. Gentlemen, would you like to vote? No? Ten yes, six no. Okay, so failed. So motion failed on two-thirds, we need eleven.
Thank you. Chair, the second one is resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, Tribe Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the corrective action plan for the United States Department of Agriculture Summer Food Services Program and the corrective action attachment plan for the review and approval. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Spotted Bear.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Halverson.
Blaine Little Thunder. Ronald Randall.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier. Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior. Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
No.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes, yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
No.
David Poyer.
No.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Don Ray Gossberg.
Yes.
David Kelly.
No.
Garfield Steele.
Okay, so with the two councilmen that just walked in, the count would be thirteen for two-thirds.
No, the count would be twelve.
Twelve, I meant, I'm sorry, twelve. So with that, thirteen yes, five no, motion carried.
Chair, our last for finance for two-thirds is resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving the OST enrollment department to provide the Oglala oyate with scannable tribal IDs and future tribal IDs will indicate the tribal member's district. Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Spotted Bear, second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumpin Eagle Senior. Bo Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
Jillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Don Ray Gossberg.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Seventeen yes, one no, motion carried. Seventeen yes, one no, motion carried. Uh, was that it, Councilwoman Spotted Bear?
That's all I have, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
Are we finished with the two-thirds for the committees? I'll wait till after Dave.
Okay, oh, you're next then. Councilman Poyer.
I got four from the land committee. Resolution of Ogallawasoo Tribe authorizing directing laws through Tribe Environmental Protection Program to apply for Mr. Grants Contracts Awards on behalf of Ogallawasoo Tribe, including the Tribal Brownsville Response Program Bipartisan Infrastructure Law. Motion to approve, this is when it's probably gonna
Motion.
chopping block, but, motion, uh-huh.
Okay, motion by Councilman Poyer, second by No, second. Oh, uh, I didn't, I didn't see your hand, I saw a hand go up over here. Councilman Steele. Secretary call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Bold Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
David Poyer. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donrak Ospear. David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Seventeen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Resolution of Ogallawasoo Tribe. Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe requesting one hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty for the Ogallawasoo Tribe Stream Flow Gauging Project and five thousand, seven hundred and seventy for the establishment of a groundwater monitoring network from the Bureau of Indian Affairs for the FY twenty-four BIAPL six thirty-eight contract award. I so move, this is under Reno Red Clots Program Water Resources.
Okay, motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Greenwell. Call for the vote. Also, let's recognize Councilman Lunderman at ten fifty-nine. Yes, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Bold Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donrak Ospear.
Yes.
David Kelly. Garfield Steele.
Eighteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
Resolution of Ogallawasoo Tribe Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe making the Badlands Bombing Program a standalone program of Ogallawasoo Tribe, with that I so move.
Davy, was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Greenwell, and Councilman Randall. Secretary call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Bold Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donrak Ospear. David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Unanimous nineteen, motion carried.
Resolution of the Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe removing Blaine Little Thunder as a voting member of Ogallawasoo Tribe Land and Natural Resource Committee in compliance with ordinance nineteen twenty-two, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Poyer, second by Councilman Randall. Secretary call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder. Ronald Randall.
Yeah.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Bold Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Julian Spotted Bear. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donrak Ospear. David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Eighteen yes, one not voting, motion carried.
One more. Ordinance of Ogallawasoo Tribal Council of the Ogallawasoo Tribe amending the OST Personnel Policy Procedure Manual. Ordinance eighteen twenty-two as amended by ordinance twenty-four oh-two, January second of twenty twenty-four to include elected officials in the retirement benefit. With that I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilman Poyer. Second by Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder. Ronald Randall.
Yeah, yeah.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bold Little White Man.
Yeah.
Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Donrak Ospear.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Eighteen yes, one no, motion carried.
Thank you, Council, that's all for the land committee.
Any other two-third items? No? Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
No, I just had a, a district member that wanted to address the council. I don't know if you want to run the motion to approve the agenda first, or she has just a, a couple of minutes just to address council on something. Iva Good Voice Flute.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll approve the agenda, and then we'll move on. And motion by Councilman Poyer. Second? Councilman Little? Okay, second by Councilman Little. Call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall. Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior. Bold Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yeah.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Jackie Sears.
Oha.
Donrak Ospear. David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Unanimous nineteen, motion carried.
Okay, I'd like to, um, ask Iva to come up. It'll be just a couple of minutes, she, she just wants to address the council on, uh, something she wants to read to us.
Okay.
Oh, okay, all right, um. Good morning. President Starr comes out, tribal council representatives, visitors, and the listening audience. My name is Iva Good Voice Flute, the oldest progeny of the late Lilian Tobacco, and a constituent of Ukbalni District residing in number four, Havia Community. A most gracious thank you to Councilwoman Sears for giving me, giving time to me to allow me to speak before you. I will begin with a sincere congratulations to those who have returned to this circle to continue your work, and to the newly elected who will bring enlightenment combined with a new energy, including ideas to further enhance what exists. All of these endeavors will strengthen our tribal government and the power that it wields. There can be no tolerance of narcissism because there is no I in team. There might be tumultuous times, but it will pass quickly in what will span a short timeframe. There will be moments of bipartisanship with a brief uncertainty. But regardless of what the political climate holds, we are the great Ogallala Lakota Nation who have historically exhibited acts of courage, triumph, and perseverance that endures the passage of time. Challenges will be met and overcome with the mindset to accomplish our goals. When we all work together, there is strength and solidarity in numbers to prevent a negation of our treaties. A tribal nation is only as strong as its leadership. Optimism is key to our survival. The pres- tribal president has touted the fact that this is the first administration that has a large number of military veterans in office. In this very profound statement, I found myself immediately taking heart because it gives me, a fellow comrade, the ability to have a sense of pride, hope, and determination that not only will you act in our best interest and well-being, but that of the citizens of our nation overall. My mom helped us to understand that to have a working government, we must vote because our vote is our voice, our power to show that we care. What has been written and read now can be construed as words of encouragement or merely reflections and insight from someone because they were taught to care. As I close, I would also like to share prayer with y'all. Almighty God, bless those who hold office and the government of the Ogallawasoo Tribe that they may do their work in a spirit of wisdom, kindness, and justice to serve faithfully and promote the general welfare. Amen. With that, Ma Lakota Ki U I Mata. Mo'Unsila Yu Ha Ma Wani. Ktana Mish Iya. I am proud to be Lakota. I will carry with me compassion for others and myself. Li La Wopila Thanka Echichiapi. Na Wana Miglu Shte. Hachiduk Shto. President, yeah, I'd like to thank, uh, Iva for sharing those words with us, cause you know, it's a hard, it's hard for us as leaders to move forward when we don't have that support. But hearing that from our people, you know, makes you feel like, um, they're, they have your back, you know, cause we do need that support, and it's the, the words alone and the prayer. I want to commend her for that, you know, for doing that for council and the leadership here because we are facing hard times today. And we're gonna have some hard decisions, and, and we're gonna ha- have to discuss our priorities now moving forward, and thinking about the people and the needs today because we are gonna have some challenges ahead of us. So with that, you know, thank you, Iva, for the prayer and the comments.
Thank you, yes, thank you for your, uh, words, words of encouragement. Sometimes we need to hear that from our membership. So thank you. Wopila. Go ahead, Sergeant Arms.
Good morning. My name's Ed Aaron Cloud, Sergeant Arms, I want to say good morning to the council, to all the staff, guests, and all the listening audience there. I just wanted to say a friendly reminder to the council here. Be a long day, and I'm sure y'all know in the past, sometimes it gets heated emotional, I'll ask that just give people common courtesy, if they're talking, just wait till they get done talking, and then start in, and then, because a lot of times this conversation starts going without the, um, chairman calling on you, so I just, uh, ask you to have the respect for your colleagues, and, you know, let them finish talking, or then wait for the co- uh, chairman to, um, call on you. Cause I know a lot of times, you all know that hands go up, and everybody, sometimes they just jump the gun, and they start talking, so I just, uh, like to say that friendly reminder, and also I want to think our relative for the prayer and the good words there, you know. We all know that like they said, we've been around for a long time, and, um, the backbone of our people is our, is our women, and is our community, and we got a lot of people with a lot of knowledge and expertise out there, and I just want to encourage us moving forward, let's try to utilize our people and their experience and knowledge. They got a lot out there, you know, and times are changing, well, like everybody said, we're all gonna need to come together and you know, try to get to one mind and try to move forward, and we don't know what's coming down the pipeline here, so Wopila for listening.
Thank you. Sergeant Arms. Okay, so, um... Okay. Okay, so. I thought they wanted. Okay. So we're going to jump right into this heated discussion that's coming down from the President of the United States and all the executive orders he's putting out there. And where it, where we stand in this theater of operations that's happening. One of the things that, and I just want to mention, a lot of calls come across my desk day and night concerning what are we going to do? I know we started, we had a meeting back in December trying to predict 2025. His, his policies coming down to strategize on that. We had that, and I think we are the only tribe that, I know when it brought this to Great Plains region, that we actually had that discussion already. So Wopila for the Ogallasoo Tribe and for doing that, strategizing on 2025 issues. But, and now we're in this, we're in a situation where those orders are actually being carried out. But we don't know how, how much it affects us and, and what is going on. So I've been telling people, I say, you know, the best, sometimes patience is the best thing in this case because we don't know exactly what it, it defines on who it affects. So we got to let it play out for a little bit. But in the meantime, we need to, as a tribe, we need to pull our, as is mentioned, to draw down our money, whatever we have. And the Chief of Staff talking with the programs and getting their, their input as far as where they stand at with their programs. Are they going to be sustainable for the next month or so until we find more information on how it affects our funding and our tribes? We also got to worry about, we do have a peace treaty in place. And some of the language that affects the, that's coming down in those executive orders, does it pertain to us? Or do our treaty obligations cover us as a tribe? And how the government sees us? So there's a lot of questions out there. And by reacting to it right now is probably not a good idea because, as Councilman Steele said, we'll be spinning in circles. And right now, taking action is, is far from my, in, in my mind, a thing to do right now. And we just need to let it play out a little bit. But that's why we're here, to discuss that. And we need to put the fire out with this fear mongering that's going on nationwide with tribal nations in Indian country nationwide. So we need to have this conversation and, and try to figure out how to protect our people as a tribe. And so those are the things that are happening right now. The comptroller, I guess, meeting with the treasurer, according to Councilwoman Spotted Bear. And they're drawing down the funding as we speak. Dakota's meeting with, Dakota is the acting Chief of Staff. And he'll be getting with the programs starting today and to see where, where we sit at in this, in this situation as far as finance and other things go that pertain to our programs out there within our tribe. I believe we have sixty-six programs out there. So we got a huge tribe we've got to worry about. And so that's where we sit now. We've been talking with Jennifer all morning, I'm sure. Comptroller and treasurer's been reaching out. The superintendent is probably en route here. I believe she didn't know where the meeting was. So that's the word I got. So hopefully she is en route. We're still trying to locate her. So a lot of those things are already happening. And and if, if you're worried about reacting, well, what are we going to do? If we take action on something and we're not, we don't know for sure what is exactly in the language of these executive, executive orders, we just took action for nothing. But we can take action within the tribe. So I just want to mention that. And I'm going to open the floor up so we can talk about it. And let's try to put out the fire in this fear mongering for now and, and take it head-on and these issues. And let's, let's brainstorm here and figure out what needs, what action needs to be taken at the tribal level to protect our, our Oi'ate. With that, I'll open it up. Go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
I think one of the things, President, is that we need to get more information out there to the public, to our people. Maybe a press release or something to, to let them know that we are aware of everything that's going on and we are addressing them. And a lot of this is done in committee. So, you know, sometimes it's not out there, but just to reassure them that it is being addressed and kind of just to inform them because they are calling us, asking us why we're not addressing these issues. So maybe that's something that can be done.
Yes. Go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
You know, there, there is all kinds of rumors out there, but some, a lot of it that comes out is true too. So we really have to watch and, you know, because I read one that's going to be coming that they're applying for a grant. And what the news is saying that they're cutting off all the grants. And it's not only to Indian country, it's all programs throughout the United States. So, you know, our biggest income is agriculture. And if these farmers and the ranchers get hit by these cuts, there goes our general fund. So we really do have to watch. And I got a call, a couple of them this morning on GA. And I guess GA hasn't been out for a couple of weeks. And when they called the BIA, the BIA's got a, I don't know who they talked to in there, but they said we might, they might be getting the funding in a couple of weeks. Well, if Hump's message holds true, these GA recipients might not be getting anything. So we need somebody that has some answers. Because once they, once we start doing that, it's going to have a snowball effect on all of us. You know, and I don't know what programs have drawn down money or if they did, if they all got it down or there's still some in the middle. But we have to be prepared. And some of these, if their funding don't come through, that affects the indirect cost gap that we have because indirect costs fund some of our tribal employees. So we really have to talk about this. You know, I'm really not in favor of meeting with some of the other tribes, but I think we have to see what the other tribes are doing too. Because some of this stuff is going to take action by the tribes in our area. You know, because we can't go saying this, this one said this, this one said that. It's better to share the information so that we're all on the same track. You know, because, and I think you're the chair of that, and you said you don't, they're not going to meet till March. But something like this where it affects the tribes, I think a special can be called by you guys
We are.
to get together because this is going to get ridiculous. We don't want it to hit us in the face at the last minute. Because this was a surprising move yesterday and it hits the national news today. But that's just my opinion. But like I say, we need, we should hear from Jennifer Hughes. We need to hear from the treasurer and Dean. What programs need to draw down or if they draw down, whatever. Just because we all need to know that, not just certain people. Thank you.
Totally agree. That's why we're here. Any other concerns? Go ahead, Councilman Randall.
I know it's, we're all questioning and scared, but we also got to remember, this is the way governments work. Controlled by fear. If they've done it forever and it, and it's, it's fresh into the process. So and then we have lawyers, we have program directors who all qualify to. So I'm in favor of them giving us the reports and me too is understanding this controlled by fear. If we panic too much, we're going to set ourselves up. So just be cautious of that and keep in that mindset. That started way back in the days when every government is, they have that control by fear. And you're, you're looking this way, the same way direction they're looking. They set you up to look that way while they're doing things back here. So be cognitive of that. So that's just my, my, my two cents of this topic here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Go ahead, Councilman.
Fear is what caused everybody to run to the fort for protection. Those that stayed out on the prairie survived until they died. But that's neither here nor there. I think we're put to task. We're put to task now. And as legislators, we need to see that. You know, we need to open our eyes to what's happening. And fear isn't a driving factor because we've seen fear all our lives and we know how to deal with it. We know how to adjust to it. But I think without knowing exactly what's happening in Washington or without knowing what our treasurer or dean is doing right now, we're just going to sit here twiddling our thumbs over an idea. So let's start on our agenda and get at least halfway through it today.
Yes, Dean and Cora will be en route here. I guess they, they are en route, I should say. So they'll give us an update on what they're, what they have done already and and so forth. I did get a, a message from the Chief of Staff. He is working with the programs and prepping in that area. Go ahead.
I mean strategically, do we really want to, do we really want to comptroller and the treasurer out here talking when they could be doing things in office and easily get on Zoom and give us a little update? I mean, I think, I think we should let them do their thing and then maybe get on Zoom and give us a little update. Because it, it may not, it makes no sense for them to stand here in the dark with us and, and tell us things while they could be moving in the office where all the employees are and they have access to their computers and everything that they need. You know, I'm just saying it, it don't make sense for them to be standing at this podium, you know?
Well, that's what you guys wanted. You wanted their action now. So, you know, they're already en route. We didn't contact them. They, they just, I just got a message. They're coming out. So Davy, Davy's concerned about that. Maybe Davy wants to know what we, from them personally, what we're doing. So that's, you've got to be patient, guys. Be patient. We, we need to work this thing out.
I am being patient, but the, could you get Jennifer Hughes on the line to?
Yes, that's, I'm trying to, but your hands keep going up. She's online. If you look over here, she's on the screen. Jennifer, are you there?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am, President, and, and council. I know. Let me know if you want me to try to provide a few comments or, for updates.
Yes. Jennifer, we had a, this is President Starr comes out. We had a discussion this morning, you know, and I know you're, you're well aware and of what's going on. If you could just give us some information on a national level, what's going on on, on your side?
Yes, I also see, I also see Steve gone on. Not sure if other lawyers are on. But I do feel like it has been fast and furious since the memo came out. The memo, it, 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 a couple of things, obviously. It's a pause in federal funding. It also requires federal agencies to identify and review all federal financial assistance programs. But that term does not include assistance provided directly to individuals. But what it does, obviously, is there's going to be a pause on federal financial assistance starting today at January twenty-eighth, five o'clock. And then the agencies, and I did email out this list of agencies and the instructions from OMB to the agents, list of agency programs, I should say. There are about twenty-six hundred agency programs on the list. And OMB is requiring those agencies to answer several questions about their programs. And some of those are what pending funding announcements are outstanding, what anticipated obligations or dispersments through March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five are outstanding, what statutory requirements mandating the obligation or dispersment of the funds through March fifteenth are outstanding. And so that piece of the memo is information collection from the federal agencies to OMB, the Office of Management and Budget. And that information collection is due, one says February seventh, but the memo says February tenth. So what I suspect is that when they get that information in February, then OMB will walk through and see what funding it thinks is appropriate and what funding it does not want to fund anymore. I think importantly, in the memo, and then I'll get to sort of like the new, new, the latest that I have, is in the memo, it says, it clearly says on the pause, "To the extent permissible under applicable law, federal agencies must temporarily pause all activities related to obligation or dispersment of all federal financial assistance." And so that takes some analysis as to whether certain funding is allowed to be paused under this memo. Is there specific law, applicable law that mandates its dispersment? For example, we've identified Nahazda funding as, as, as an example where the agency is actually required and doesn't have the discretion to withhold funds. If it is going to withhold funds, then I, I should say it's required to disperse funds. And it can only withhold funds under certain conditions such as holding it, having an opportunity for a hearing. And it can be only based on substantial non-compliance with statutory requirements. So that's one example of where it's not permitted under applicable law. And so, you know, the argument would be that Nahazda funds should still flow. The other, there are other, you know, tribal programs authorized by Congress that have their own specific authorizing language that would have to be looked at to determine whether there are arguments for keeping that money flowing. In other words, that it doesn't fit under that term, that phrase, to the extent, to the extent permissible under applicable law. But what we just received, honestly, is a new clarification. But what we just received honestly, um, is a, a new clarification. From O M B. It's not dated, it's not timed, but it's a two pager. That's very important and I think it goes to sort of this. You know, the discussion that I had with President Starr comes out is like, we need to kind of absorb, figure out what's going on here. You know, it is what's being in some of the Hill publications as the federal freeze freak out. Cause a lot of people all over the country are, are, are looking at this. Um, in fact, one lawsuit has already been filed. Um, uh, so, but the new executive, excuse me, the new O M B document is in your email. And I know I flooded you with email this morning. It's a two pager, but it says. That uh, it was, there's guidance requesting that agencies temporarily pause. It issued guidance that agencies temporarily pause to the extent permitted by law. Grant loan or federal financial assistance programs that are implicated by the president's executive orders. What it says is any program not implicated by the executive orders. It's not subject to the pause. So this is sort of new news. Um, it at least clarification from O M B. And then it lists out the executive orders which you know some of, maybe all of. But like some are related to the border, some are related to foreign aid, some are international environment, environmental agreements. Some have to do with energy, unleashing American G. Uh, one specifically that we hear a lot about is the D E I, you know, ending wasteful government D E I programs. Defending women from gender ideology, extremism, and restoring biological truth to the federal government. That's another. One of the executive orders. And then another one is enforcing the Hyde Amendment. That has to do with using federal funds to pay for, prohibiting the use of federal funds to pay for abortions. But in this clarification, I think it's very important because it has a Q and A. Is this a freeze on all federal financial assistance? The answer is no. The pause does not apply across the board. It is expressly limited to programs, projects, and activities implicated by the president's executive orders. Such as ending D E I, the Green New Deal, and funding non-governmental organizations that undermine. The national interest. Is this a freeze on benefits to Americans like SNAP or student loans? They say the answer is no. Any program that provides direct benefits to Americans is explicitly excluded from the pause. And exempted from this review process. In addition to Social Security and Medicare, already explicitly ex, excluded. In the guidance mandatory programs like Medicaid and SNAP will continue without pause. And then importantly, and I heard Land Committee Chairman raise this. Funds for small businesses, farmers, Pell Grants, Head Start, rental assistance. And other similar program will not be paused. Um, so I'd wanted to just sort of clarify as far as the information we're getting. And everybody in our law firm frankly, is trying to figure out the effects on our clients. I think that executive, excuse me, that O M B clarification is very helpful. But we still have a lot of concerns because clients and uh. You know, I think Ogallala Sioux Tribe, as I, we discussed with President Starr comes out, I did earlier. Should try to be drawing down their program funds. Um, but we are seeing that some of the uh. Efforts are being met with the inability to draw down those funds today. Like broadband funds, uh, and DOJ funds. Um, and I think, yeah, broadband, that's including N T I A. I haven't seen anything from interior yet. Um, so it is unfolding as we speak. But to the extent that the tribe, you know, can draw down its funds and has the president laid out a plan. Uh, to me, it's the chief of staff and the program directors trying to figure out how much funding that they have available. Um, how long can they survive if the pause happens to impact their program? Um, we'll continue our analysis, but I do think this clarification from O M B is very helpful. Uh, and I also know that um, folks, uh, and we talked with the president and I know that. Uh, like Colt is working on Capitol Hill. Is on the concept of a tribal, just a flat out tribal carve out. So. That's uh, kind of what I wanted to share. And I'm happy to take questions. I don't know if anyone else has other info. Any of the other lawyers?
Any questions? Go ahead, Councilman.
Chair, I think uh, that we just need to um, you know, reiterate to the public that the, the SNAP benefits will not be effective. Cause I think that was some of our, 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 our concerns too is, you know, most of our people depend on that SNAP. So just to, for them to hear it on, on. Over the air that according to this, that it will not be effective. Thank you. As of right now.
Yes, yes. So this, I, I'm gonna say from here on out, we'll be uh, collecting data. And trying to update on what should, what will affect. So. Just keep that in mind. These things are, are playing out as we speak, but we all have to be. The eyes and ears out there. So you hear something and you know, uh, bring it to the table, your committees, whatever. Start that conversation, keep each other informed. Um, that's how we um. We're gonna be able to, uh, even with other tribes or, or if you sit on national organizations. Ask those questions. Go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
Yeah, um, Jennifer, this is uh, Councilwoman Sears, Rock Mountain District. Um, I just wanted to find out, um, does that affect? Have anything to do with like federal funding coming down to the tribes, like the six thirty eight programs? Um, I don't know if they're all, if they're all um, hundred percent came down. Their funding, I don't know, maybe Cora would know on that, that part of it.
I, I can give you guys an update on what we've done so far.
Okay.
Been on the phone since five thirty because I had seven thirty in DC. But we started doing drawdowns this morning. The normal process was, I authorized it to be suspended because if we waited for the directors to do their drawdown requests, we might not make it to the five o'clock. Point. So Tony and Dean are working and doing all the drawdowns that they can for the federal programs right now. Most of the programs already have six months drawn down, so they're okay. Um, housing has six months drawn down. I spoke with Mike, their attorney this morning. So they should be okay. They still have half of their, um. What is it called? The, their grant in the system, but they're, they're okay for six months. Um, I, I was getting calls from students who are going to school in different places. Who are afraid because they thought their Pell Grants and um guaranteed loans were going to not be funded. There was like three of them who are going to be nurses in Minnesota who called and said, what am I going to do? But I told them not to panic and keep going to school because you're almost done. Keep going. There's um, I think that's the most important thing is not to panic. Because the way I'm understanding it from, because I was trying to panic this morning at five thirty. I was. I was trying to panic yesterday when I first saw the announcement. But. As long as our funds are drawn down and we have money to operate, it's, it's normal business to. Stop things to see where you are. And, and I understand that the Trump situation is a little scary. But it's, it's normal to stop things to figure out where you are. So we have funds being drawn down now for the next six months. Whatever programs allow for that. There are programs though. That I, I am a little worried about because they don't have funds to draw down. And they get most of their funds from state funding or state reimbursements. And I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work. Um, uh, if, like emergency youth shelter. They're already in the negative, but they get their money through reimbursement. So we need to figure out how that's, we're going to work that. Um, Steph found them a grant, but they haven't applied for it yet. And um, so I don't know if that grant's even gonna be available after the end of February. Cause that's how long the halt is supposed to be till the end of February. So by the end of February, we'll know where we stand and what will continue. But my advice to you is not to panic.
Okay, like um, does, is there answers to, you know, does it affect the WIC, TANF? Medicaid or Medicare in any way? Anybody have a answer to that?
I don't have an answer for that.
Attorneys?
That's money that comes from the fed, feds to the state and the state disperses. So I don't know how they do their. Drawdown assistance or if they're reimbursed from the feds or how that works. I, I do know though that um. We did request our draw. Almost two weeks ago now for, from our land lease income. And B I A has not deposited that yet. Um, so I don't know where that is because I, I emailed Patrick last week. Um, but I haven't gotten a response yet.
And also our general assistance.
General assistance has not come down either.
And you know, myself, I think, you know. They say don't panic right now, but we have to be proactive too. We have to have a plan in place and, uh, you know, I would like to recommend that we. Develop a task force, the people who are the watchdogs, who's gonna watch these things, you know? And I know we have our treaties, you know, at stake here too because somehow. That word is out is that it's gonna jeopardize our treaties and they're gonna try everything against our treaties anyway. And I know we have Mario who is, you know, maybe keeping an eye on that part of it. So we need people. I think we still need to have a plan in place, just in case with the what ifs. We gotta be ready to um, fight back. And also, you know, we need, with that task force, I think um. That should be something the president can maybe develop. And who's gonna all be involved, like the treasurer, maybe our finance chair, um. And our attorneys and different groups. So that way they can constantly work on these executive orders and. Be ready for them. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I think they already started some of that strategic planning last administration. Um, Steph was working with the president's office and Dakota from the chief of staff to prepare for something like this. So they, they've already come up with a beginning of a plan. And I, I think it's a good idea to have a team to come together. All of the advisory committees. In DC for the different organizations are on hold. I'm not sure exactly what that means for N C A I. I'm not sure exactly what that, that means for T back. I'm not sure exactly what that means for N I E A. But they're, they are, there was, um, they're on hold. That was the memo that I got last night from our stack. And from our treasury. We have a Zoom call with treasury on the sixth, but that's the only thing that we have scheduled so far. And um, there. There are. There are um, several concerns about. Our spending. Um, we have money set aside and, you know, emergency money set aside. But that doesn't mean that we should pull it all out and spend it today or tomorrow or next week. We need to be conservative with what we have. So we can continue to help people as much as we can and as long as we can. We have to make sure that we have enough money to assist people at least through the end of February. Because that's when the grants will, should come back. And, and one of my things, and correct me if I'm wrong, attorneys. But we have contracts. Our programs are funded through six thirty eight contracts. And those contracts were set in place by the government, not just by a president. So there would have to be a process or there should be a legal way to respond. Because that's a contract and you can't just end a contract when you want to. You don't feel like it anymore. There has to be a reason and everything is, is legal. And we have a treaty that we have to stand on. Because that gave us authorities and rights to govern ourselves and for. It gave them responsibility to provide many, for many of the needs of our people. And we have to stand strong with that as well. We can't just let this happen. We have to be able to deal with it, but we are going to have to fight eventually. But we need to, I believe we have enough to let this play out until the end of February. And come back with a plan. Because if he's going to try to cut our programs through executive order, many of these things were set in place by Congress. And he doesn't have the authority. And we can challenge that. We have enough attorneys here to. Choke out the Senate. So we need to stay positive and keep on moving.
I also think that, you know, we have other tribes that are filing lawsuits. And there's a point in time they might have us join in on that. You know, so that's why I'm saying we gotta probably watch what they're doing in these um, other tribes, especially the larger. Navajo and different ones, Oklahoma.
The Northwestern tribes have already filed.
Yes, I'd like to comment on it. Oh, then I'll turn it over to James Cross. Um. You know, this is, this is why we, we have to remain calm and let things play out because there's a lot of policies and procedures and. Things like that are already in place. Treaties are in place. Uh, all those things gotta play out. And they are putting up roadblocks as, as, as this is moving on. And that's what we need to watch out for. What's a lawsuit gonna do uh, right now um. With, uh, we don't, all, all tribes are different. Um, are they a state tribe, uh, you know, um, not federally recognized? Are they a treaty tribe? Uh, so there's different situations that we have to take a look at. And I wish Mario was on this uh, Zoom call so we can clarify how strong the treaties are and what, what can be. Because I know there's a, uh, there's questions on how strong is that treaty and um, what is, can it be um. Uh, tampered with and things like that. Um, it, and I, I don't believe. Article six treaties are the supreme law of the land. We gotta remember that. We gotta stand on it. That's what I've been telling tribes. Stay calm, let it play out. Councilman Cross.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'd say you knew what's good. Um. This is really important um, discussion that we're having here and I'm glad we're having it. And I, and I think um, at some point we probably, you know, we, we have um. We have traditional leaders too that, that we have to kind of maybe at some point sit down with them, our Nachas or Ikachans. Or treaty people and sit down and as, as Ogallala, as Lakota people to, to talk about these things because I think it's kind of. That dialogue needs to happen, especially in this time, but you know, you know, we, we went through a lot as Lakota people, you know. You know, when he was in there, we went through COVID and now, you know, we're dealing with this issue. But. I started reading, reading Project Twenty Twenty Five a while back when. And um, and the, but the devil was in the fine print. You know, and, and I, and that, and then, and then what I seen in there, I didn't read the whole thing, but then it, it just talked about I, I H S and. Department of Education and nothing really talked about uh. Our, our reservations, but like I said, the devil is in the fine print in that whole, that project. And so. And then I think I was reading, my mind, my mind was getting sick too. So I had to stop, you know? So it's, it's really, uh, it was written by some really um. Evil minds, I guess. You don't really wanting to uh. Um, uh, may, may, make this, make America white again, not. Make may make this, make America white again, not gray again. But um, you know, and and now, you know, we all paid attention to social media on on. On what's going on out there and and the latest one is. When Ogala is gonna develop a position paper and I think it's time sir to uh, or chair to maybe put something together. On what being discussed here, uh, just to kind of settle people's minds on the anxiety. Those and the other um, addition to that, that is is if you can identify somebody to. Translate it into Lakota. Because there are, there's still a lot of Lakota people out there that still speak our language. If they could translate that into that, then I think that that'll help too. So maybe uh, maybe go to Chile and just kind of. Just, you know, um, relay what's being discussed here today because I I think our people are are afraid. And I think it's time to settle that down. And so um, so those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilwoman Halverson.
Good morning. Now, we've been discussing Project Forty-Five, Agenda Forty-Seven. And these executive orders that have been coming down from the White House um, government. Um, President Trump's executive orders that are impacting all people across this nation, not just tribes. And you know, I think our attorneys are, have been really um, on the ball up there in Washington DC. And I thank them for all the information that's coming down to clarify the um. What it's gonna affect Indian country. You know, a lot of these impacts are gonna heavily affect us, not only now, but in the future. I think we need to really discuss today because we're counting down the minutes. We only have till three PM today to figure out a plan. From what I'm reading online this morning is that it's gonna be a possible ninety day freeze. And you know, it sounds like we really need to strategically plan. How we are gonna help our programs out there and help our people with resources. Now I've been um, expressing self-sufficiency with um, our people growing gardens and ways to. Um, keep themselves sustained for the future, for the summer. Now we really need to implement some strategies, some strategic planning right now. Put this as top priority right now, today, um, this morning and this afternoon, even if we have to have a working lunch to discuss this. Now it sounds like the treasurer's office has been getting all, a lot of the drawdowns um, ready available. But you know, um, several days ago, uh, President Frank's office, they had a Zoom call conference. With over three hundred tribes that were discussing these impacts that this executive order was gonna. Um, impact Indian country. Now we had a part of that discussion and. I'm on a timer here. I have three fifty-three seconds left. But you know, I think we really need to dig deep right now and get something in order. You know, it's it's impacting us and it's, it's not gonna stop. It's just gonna keep rolling and rolling. You know, these executive orders are gonna keep coming out more and more. And this is a time where we, you know, have to show our leadership for our people out there. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman, standing soldier.
This kind of directed towards Cora. It, what you have done so far, is that about the limits of what you can do? Until you know exactly what's gonna, coming out of Washington? Or are there any other preventative actions that you could take that will safeguard the tribe?
At at this point, the deadline is five PM. Everything will close down at five PM, which is three PM our time. So what we're doing to draw down the funds is basically all that we can do right now. They are asking for um. Contracts and budgets and all kinds of stuff at OMB. I think Jennifer explained that to you earlier. And that deadline is February tenth. And after the tenth, they're supposed to start reviewing all of those budgets and contracts. Because they're trying to find out where wasted spending is. And I don't know where we sit on Trump's priority ladder, probably not too high, personal opinion. So I I think that in the meantime, it would not be a bad idea to. Maybe write a letter. To our representatives, Thune, Rounds, and Dusty Johnson. And let, remind them that we do have a treaty. And remind them that our people are their constituents. And remind them that we need the funding. To provide for the livelihood of so many people on on this reservation. And remind them that we have fifty-four thousand members that don't just live in Pine Ridge. Because it's it's our duty as elected officials, even though I'm not an elected official. To remind them that they have a responsibility to our people. Through the treaty and I like what the president said, that should be part of the reminder too. Article Six of the United States Constitution. States treaties are the supreme law of the land. I think we all need to get on our email and start emailing.
Councilman Jumping Eagle.
Yo Chairman, I'll I'll make the motion to that you do send that letter to our congressional, all three of them. Dusty, Johnson, and Thune, and and Rounds, and just what Cora stated, you know, that. Where where, you know, we're we're bound, the United States is bound by the treaties to help us, you know, um. I think, I think sending a letter would be good and that they should be supporting us.
I I think Jennifer, uh, we had that discussion this morning.
Okay, but we're gonna make a, we're gonna make a motion here on the council floor that you do that letters. So that's my motion.
Okay, uh, well, let me make a suggestion first, uh, before I turn it over to you. Some, sometimes we do those things automatically, uh, in those. So I don't feel that it's a motion has to be made for the president to send a letter. Because that's uh, that's what um, is automatic when it come out of these discussions. Go ahead.
Okay, I I think you should include the whole council. Because if you have Jennifer draft the letter and you each send it. He's, they're gonna get that letter twenty-six times. And that's going to make them look at it twenty-six times. Uh, cuz if you just have the president send it, they're gonna get one email and think it's just, you know, one little concern. I mean, granted, he is the president, but you guys are the council. Everybody has email. Jennifer can write a form letter, you could print it out, sign it, and scan it and email it back.
I'll include that in my motion.
Okay, so we got motion by Councilman Jumping Eagles, second by Councilman Londonman.
Question.
Uh, go ahead, I'll let Councilman Spotted Bear.
Chair, so I know that um, Governor Roden just swore in as well. And I think it'd be worth, you know, uh, worth the idea that we reach out. And we don't even know, you know, who this individual is and what his standpoint is. And it'd be worth, you know, the president reaching out and, you know, making a visit. Uh, but I like the idea that the treasurer made cuz I would like to sign that letter. And I second Ryan's motion on that as well, uh, because it's, it's something that's necessary. And I always wondered why council representatives don't send those letters. And uh, not only the president, because it puts more of an emphasis that we stand, we stand behind the government as well. Thank you.
Well, what we usually do at the Great Plains level is, is we um, write one letter and then all the signatures. Suggestion. Go ahead, Councilwoman Halverson.
You know, before my time ran out earlier, I was gonna recommend to council to go up to Washington DC. Coming up with all the other tribal leaders, stand together strong up there where it's important. Where this impact is gonna be more than just a letter. And also, you know, I support that letter, but I also like to um, put the words in my own um, wording to send that out. Thank you.
Okay, secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bold Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Jeremy.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
David Poyer. Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Don Roy Gossbear.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Nineteen unanimous motion carried. Yes, go ahead, Treasurer.
Um, you know, with with that being done, I I think we should also make a motion. To have the attorney draft a constituency letter that we can print on Facebook. And that we can put in the newspaper, so people can cut it out or print it or whatever. And um, send that in too. Because they need to know that we're not invisible. And that our people do need the money. And that people are aware that we are Lakota and have a treaty to back us up. And if our membership was to send a letter to our representatives, I think that would be very, very effective. Because it would open their eyes. It would open their eyes to the concern of our people. So I guess I'm requesting a motion.
Motion, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second. Second, Councilman Londonman. Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ronald Randall.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Bold Little White Man. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. Gillian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
David Poyer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears.
Oh huh.
Don Roy Gossbear.
Yes.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Garfield Still.
Nineteen, yes, unanimous. Go ahead, Councilman Randall.
Uh, just a comment, I wanna thank Cora for that, that uh, that idea there. It's a good time to jump on a bandwagon right now, or not bandwagon, but you see what's going on with the Lumbee tribe. And the, the, the government is seeing what's going on with the Lumbee tribe. So we can jump in, in there, uh, with our, our PR work with that right now. So that's a good idea to get that PR work out there, even though it's against to what uh, native tribes. Are saying in reference to the Lumbee tribe, but that, that's. What also got your wounded knee bill acknowledged too. So there's a lot of politics going behind it. We want to, that platform ourselves, so I thank you Cora for that.
Yes, that's uh, media has always uh, uh, plays an important role in that, in that. Gotta, we gotta, we gotta be, because our wounded knee bill just passed the House. Now it's moving on to the Senate. Uh, now if we. If if we take action or mention things like affecting the Lumbee tribe, we have no position. And, well, at least I don't, um, on where they, where they stand, they're more than welcome to fill out the federal application. Go through the process just like everybody else. And so we made them aware that, that we have nothing to do with their, their efforts there becoming federally recognized. But we also have to um, um, agree that, you know, it's, it's, it's fair to. Go through the process first, um, to get a federally recognized. And and if we make remarks and and things opposing it, that could hurt, hurt us. Because it is the North, North Carolina senator that stopped it. So keep that in mind. Go ahead, Councilman Weston.
Um, I just had a quick question, um, about the uh, projects we have going on the reservation right now. Does that any, affect any of them? Kind of like our community buildings, our downs, you know, things like that? Or are the fundings already set in place?
I think that's already been obligated, but I'll let the treasurer answer that.
For the community, for the community buildings, we already have the money in place. It's already in the bank and it's already obligated, so that, that was what we took care of at the last um, council meeting. Remember when we made all those motions? So that's all set in place. They haven't pulled any of it back or anything. But I just got the list of every single program that will be affected, but it's fifty-one pages. Um, Stacy, if I send it to you, can you email it to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys want copies or just email?
Randall and Davy.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that you didn't, you misunderstood, you understood me that I said, I didn't say I was against the Lumbees. Being acknowledged as Indians. I'm saying that the acknowledgement of Indianness or in America is forefront with that Lumbee thing. So us doing our PR work would enhance that or, you know, give us a focus too, is what I'm saying. Cuz I read the work and uh, when you first went to DC and the action taken against it. Now they had to make some concessions, so now it's back on the floor again. So that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, we ran out of time, so they had to reintroduce it again with this new administration. Councilman Poyer.
You know, I wanna go back to when it first started. It said, we don't need to panic, but yet we do have to panic. Cuz you know, February tenth and this is not very far away. So we really have to watch what's going on. You know, and I, I know uh, different ones are probably gonna be going to DC. But you know, it doesn't hurt to invite our two senators, staff members. I think they got an office in Rapid City and the Congress has a representative, have them come down. And we could give them what we wanna talk about. But we have to use all the avenues and my suggestion is, and I've been to DC for a while, I don't plan on going back. But you know, what we have to educate is those senators and congresspeople. That don't have tribes in their state, cuz they don't, they don't care. That's what we have to work on because I don't remember what term it was, but a, a whole delegation went from Ogala. All through tribe and they hit every senator's office with the treaty. And that turned things around and it does wake them up. But that's a lot of footwork and your feet get tired and everything, you're kind of crabby in the evenings and. But things like that work, but still, we can invite these people down from Rapid City to talk to them. Even if they go in the president's office to make them feel and then voice our concerns, because that goes a long ways. Cuz I know they talk to uh, our senators and congresspeople in in DC. But that would just be my suggestion. And then we need to feel, feel out, how the state feels about us with this new governor. I mean, he might be supportive of the. I mean, he might be supportive of the tribe, rather than like the last one, but that's just my suggestion.
Oh, believe me, we're, we're definitely gonna reach out to this new governor, um, and see what, um, how he can work with the, with us, with our, even though we have our ban in place, we can still work with the um, the new current governor, and that's what we plan on doing. So it's not, still not tabled to work with the, uh, the state and to see where we're at, but I would like programs input too, uh, and see what kinda ideas and, and the needs they, they have. Um, so we can take it to uh, the new governor, uh, we'll go visit the Capitol and then say, hey, this, these are our needs, how can you help us in, in this, uh, this effort? And, and start building that communication, that relationship there, so it's not, it's, it's, it's not tabled. It's, it's, it's gonna happen here soon. Just gotta be patient, one thing at a time. Go ahead.
Um, we don't have to panic, I mean, because Cora said some words that were pretty inspirational. She, I think she took it from Trump's book when she said, we need to halt and then we need to discover where our money's going. And we, we left out one thing, tribal council, you know, we spend a lot of money of our own dollars that we need to start looking at our monies and protecting our monies and not go overboard on spending. And that's every one of us sitting here, we need to take care of responsibility. We can either flourish now or starve in the future, that's up to us. But we all have to stand together on this, because we don't know the outcome, but it pays to put a little bit away to save for that rainy day. Thank you.
Yes, to comment off that, um, Councilman Standing Soldier, you know, it'd be nice if we had a team of, um, financial uh people who are um, has, have uh qualifications and certificates, degrees in, in financial business. Uh, if we had a team of that, you know, like that, to figure these kinda problems out, where we stand, pull our financials together, to plan, strategize, how we can put money aside and things like that, we, all we got is uh, uh Ichaga, but what is Ichaga doing? So we need to think like that. You know, we have a lot of people that graduate from OLS, uh, our, our college here. Uh, OLC, but uh, are we utilizing, we can, we can pull a team from them and them young minds to, to strategize, so just ideas like that we need to think about. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Cora, is, Cora, is there any is there any big programs there in, that don't fit in the category of funding? Yes.
Sorry. Lee App. CSBG. I lost my email. Okay, let me open it again.
Okay, go ahead, Jennifer, while we're waiting.
The tribe, oh, sorry. The tribal food sovereignty program, that's the one that we've been using lately to purchase all the meat that's been going to the districts. That is on hold, tribal agriculture, technical assistance. Tribal youth, workforce development. Um, emergency conservation programs. Uh, I can't find it now, where did I stop?
Tribal colleges?
Tribal colleges, um, water reimbursement, water programs, conservation programs, reforestation programs, livestock indemnity programs, emergency assistance for livestock, which could affect our lease income. Wildfires, that would be BIA's fire.
You know.
Farm Service Agency Taxpayer Outreach.
You know, because, I don't know if he's still back there, the guy from ICHES, you know, is the funding, is the funding gonna be held up on our water and sewer, that our people need to be hooked up? You know, because that's gonna be a big problem, we're gonna, we'll get phone calls on that for water and sewer hookups, if that's on hold too. Oh, there he is.
James.
James, you know if that, that's gonna be held up?
To my knowledge, absolutely nothing's been changed, all uh current contracts are still fully funded and we're moving forward.
But that's just for this year, what's going on, for those that are funded now, right? Are, 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 you're not in that bunch that needs to be.
Yeah, I, I can't tell you exactly what the future holds, but we're proceeding as usual.
Okay, thanks.
Um, there, there's the TANF. There was supposed to be changes this coming year. And um, the planning office, when it was open, was working on a workforce development study that is required to be submitted this year because the work um requirements are going to be changing for TANF recipients, but we have nobody in planning anymore. So we need to figure that one out. A labor market survey. Um, special supplemental, supplemental nutrition for women and infants and children, that's WIC, that will be affected. Food, food. Did you guys get the email?
Solid Waste.
Higher Ed, Solid Waste, Forestry, Small Business Grants, Broadband, Adult Nutrition Services. Sounds like every single program.
Broadband. There's um SNAP fraud implementation. SNAP employment. School nutrition. Child nutrition. SNAP. School breakfast programs, national school lunch programs, the milk program, WIC. Child adult care food program, summer food service program. Child nutrition. There. These will all be on hold today. Um, I, I was on the phone this morning at about six o'clock with a few people from the schools. And um, ONEC it did send out a memo earlier to have the schools draw down the funding that is available to them. I also got a phone call from um Mike at Housing and he said that they have six months drawn down already. Um. Huh?
So did you say SNAP was affected?
It's on here. No, it's further down. After the school lunch stuff. It's on there.
Ms. Hughes, the list that we're reading, it sounds like they just want a list of the amounts in each program that are funded through the tribe. Does that mean that these lists are gonna be impacted, or they're just looking for information from these programs? February seventh.
S- s- so my understanding is that, um, that, that, yeah, that there are they are asking for this information by February seventh for all of these programs. I think there are like twenty-six hundred of them. I didn't do, I didn't, I'm not looking all the way down, but so, um, they're wanting information on all of these programs by February seventh. But in this new clarification from, from the executive order, excuse me, from the OMB, I keep saying that, the new clarification from the Office of Management and Budget that came out, it doesn't have a date on it, but it came out today after the president's memo. It says that mandatory programs like Medicaid and SNAP will continue without pause. And so I think, I think they are looking for information on all of these listed programs, but they're saying any program not implicated by the president's executive orders is not subject to the pause. So, you know, like this clarification says, any program that provides direct benefits to Americans is explicitly excluded from the pause and exempted from this review process. So I'll be honest, it's not, it's not clear as a bell to me, but they have said that SNAP will continue without pause. As will funds for small businesses, farmers, Pell Grants, Head Start, rental assistance and other similar programs will not be paused. So.
I guess.
I don't.
That's, yeah, that's the way I've seen it, is that the OMB is just looking for budgets or financial information.
It's all information.
By February seventh. So I think our programs and our financial, anything financial, need to get those budgets together to send to the OB, OMB, right, Ms. Hughes?
Well, I think that's what the agencies are being required to submit to the Office of Management and Budget, all those questions. Does the program have anticipated obligations and disbursements, but many of those programs are subject to the pause. But they're specifically stating that Medicaid and SNAP are not.
Yeah, and social service. Or SSI.
So, social security, Medicare, Medicaid, SNAP.
So another thing we'll be doing is, and I know we talked about it, and we have a history of reaching out to other tribes and coordinating with, or attorneys coordinating with each other with tribes. Probably reach out to the Great Plains too, so Jennifer, um, um, she's been part of that, and, and um, that seems to be kinda effective. Right, Jennifer?
Correct, yes, I think it, I think it will be important, President, and I know councilmembers mentioned, you know, keeping our eye on this and developments, and also it sounded like communicate with others and see what the other tribes are doing, and I know for a fact that some of the tribal attorneys for Great Plains tribes wanna have a discussion later day. I think that would be great to storm, share information, as well as a Great Plains Tribal Chairman's Association meeting would be excellent, very effective, strength in numbers. You could even have a meeting and maybe invite uh the Thune and Rounds and Johnson staffers to help shed some light on, on what this all means. Um, and I think that could be done via Zoom, that's hand in hand with Land Committee Chairman Poyer's recommendation. I know he was talking about bringing them to the tribal council, that'd be great. But to the extent you can get them to the Great Plains Tribal Chairman's meeting soon would be excellent.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Council.
Uh, Ms. Hughes, do you think that we need to do a request to all programs to draw down any and all funds they have available before two and a half hours deadline? Or is that too drastic, or I guess what are your recommendations for that?
They've already done it. That's what we were working on all morning.
Thanks for that clarification, Cora.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if the superintendent was online or.
No, she's not.
Okay, cuz we had, you know, I did, I had a question on how it's gonna affect, what's being affected in BIA that she can see. But I guess we'll wait till she comes.
Any other questions? Okay, we got a half hour before we break for lunch. We'll go to lunch at one. And that's, you'll have to go to the cafeteria for that. So any other discussion?
Everyone can break for lunch now.
Well, we can't break for lunch cuz it's not ready yet, um. So, go ahead, uh, Councilman Standing Soldier.
Um, I'm getting complaints and getting elbowed over here because Mr. Randall would like to be put on the finance committee.
Okay, so we can continue and while we're waiting, while we still have some time, so. So, discussion, uh, with that, are we done, so we can move on? Okay, moving on.
Secretary, that's definitely you.
Oh, okay, Medicine Root. Okay, yes, well, I'll, at this time, I'll turn it over to the districts and Medicine Root.
Okay, um, we have two of them, the first one is Resolution on Medicine Root District, Razzagalsu Tribe is a sovereign nation, sovereign tribal nation that has entered into treaties as the supreme law of the land with the United States government pursuant to the US Constitution Article Six, and is a signatory to the Treaty of Fort Lamy of eighteen fifty-one, one stat seven four nine, and the Treaty of Fort Lamy of eighteen sixty-eight, fifteen stat six three five, and continues the nation to nation relationship with the federal government, and Razzagalsu Tribe organized under Section sixteen of the Indian Organization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection fifty-one twenty-three, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws. And under Article Three of the Tribal Constitution, the Galsu Tribal Council is the governing body of the tribe. And whereas Article Six, Article Four. Section one F, one K, one M, and one W empower the Tribal Council to manage the economic affairs of the tribe. Protect and preserve the property of the tribe and adopt laws governing the conduct of persons on the Pioneer Indian Reservation. And adopt laws protecting and promoting the health and general welfare of the Galsu Tribe and its membership. And whereas the Medicine Root District held their Executive Board Elections at a regularly scheduled district meeting. And the following individuals were elected by district membership. Chairman Perry Al Zephyr, Vice Chairman Howard Rooks, Secretary Paletta Redwill. Treasurer Madonna Whon Horse, Fifth Member Stacy Marufel. And whereas, the Executive Board will hold office until the current term expires in November twenty twenty-six. Now therefore be it resolved that Galsu Tribe hereby recognizes the elected Executive Board of Medicine Root District motion.
Motion, motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by. Councilman Little White Man. Go ahead.
Um, Ray, uh, Ryan, was the Medicine Root District have their own election? Okay. All right, thank you.
And I believe the, they passed out the minutes too, I think. Secretary, call for the vote.
Ryan. Um, so we'll be changing this into a Tribal Council Resolution once it's approved. But I just wanted to recommend that your title say. Resolution of the Medicine Root. District Recognizing the Newly-Elected Medicine Root District Executive Board. Just so that it, the title matches that therefore be resolved. Okay, thank you. Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross? Gillian Spotted Bear? George Dreamer Junior? Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Don Rick Osberg? David Kelly?
Yes.
Garfield Steele? Ms. Spotted Bear, would you wanna vote? Okay, thank you.
Seventeen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
Um, Resolution of Medicine Root District requesting the immediate reopening of the Kyle Dalton Juvenile Court Services. Uh, Stacy, can I skip all the wherases, the sovereignty clause, the? Section sixteen and Article Four. Um. Down to the fourth, whereas the Medicine Root District has experienced a decrease in services and. Accessibility of adult and juvenile service, juvenile service, a motion to approve.
Question.
Can I just give you an update on that courthouse as well in law and order? We, uh, there was some back and forth from the last administration to the current. And they did receive a quote for. For renovation, so. The Property and Supply Director is moving forward on that, and what we did encourage is that. When the renovations are complete, that the staff move in there immediately because the last time that it was renovated. It was left vacant for a while, so, once it is renovated, um, it's good that. They're, they're wanting to move in there right away, so. Uh, just an update that the contract was approved for. The work to start, so, um, to begin inside that Kyle Courthouse. And that's my second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Little White Man, and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Spotted Bear. Secretary, call for the vote.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
Yep.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? James Cross? Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior? Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Don Rick Osberg? David Kelly?
Yes.
Garfield Steele?
Seventeen yes, two not voting, motion carried.
That's it for Medicine Root, thank you Chair, thank you Council.
Thank you. Uh, Won, Won Dini?
Yeah, um, I got a, I had a. Mister, uh, the attorney from Finance draft ordinance? I think Julie's the one with it, right, Julie? Okay, can you, can you, I, I was searching.
Yeah, it's in the Finance Packet, a very la- last document. In your, um.
Can you, can you read it?
Yeah, I can.
Secretary, please, I don't, I don't have copy.
Ordinance of the Ogallisui Tribal Council of the Ogallisui Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Ordinance of the Ogallisui Tribal Council of the Ogallisui Tribe to waive tariff fees for the Wuditni Youth Building Project. Whereas we have the sovereignty clause, whereas the section, section sixteen, Indian Reorganization Act Clause. Article Four Clause. And whereas, the Wuditni Youth Building Project will provide critical needed services to the youth. And whereas the project is facing budget shortfalls due to. Unanticipated increased costs, and any fees paid to tariff would distract from the services of. Able to be provided to tribal members through the youth building. And whereas on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, the O S T Finance Committee considered the request to re, to waive. Tariff fees to ensure that the maximum amount of funds goes to the construction of the youth building. And recommends that the waiver be forwarded to the Tribal Council for consideration and approval. Now therefore be it ordained that the Ogallisui Tribal Council hereby authorizes a one-time waiver. Of the tariff fees for the construction of the Wuditni Youth Building Project certification.
Um, before I motion, just a brief update, I, I did send pictures of our building to everybody that was in the, um, meeting that day. It is a pretty big building, pretty nice, um, we did get. Um, a six hundred thousand dollar grant from Shockbee, and we had a matching grant. From, um, childcare, cuz they're gonna provide childcare services in there. Um, it's a eight hu- eight thousand square foot building. Um, it's gonna have a gymnasium, two classrooms, office space, kitchen. And we're hoping to provide, um, elderly males out of this building because currently Won Dini don't have elderly males. Um, so, all the way around, you know, there's, there's really nothing in Won Dini. Um, any places for funerals or gatherings, there's no place for our, our membership. Sometimes these, um, churches over there, they, they don't allow our, 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 our community members to utilize their. Churches or their halls, and so. It's, it's a really needed. Space for our community and, and, and I guarantee you, it's gonna. Bring up the morale of our young people over there because they'd finally have. A place to play basketball, volleyball, you know, and, and our plan is to put a computer room in, in one of the classrooms and. And provide, um, educational services. In regards to, you know, Won Dini itself with the eighteen ninety massacre and, and everything that happened, so. All in all, it is gonna be a good building. All the money we got, it, it's definitely needed to complete the building. And so every little bit of it will help, so that, that was our, our reasonings for requesting this waiver. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll motion to, um. Approve their ordinance.
Motion by Councilman Steele, second by Councilman Jumping Eagle. Question?
Yes, I just, um, wanted to make a comment because, um. The tariff fees that are collected from. The tariff office. From these contractors. Comes, that does come back to our districts as a portion, a percentage. And I realize it's a much-needed. Um. Youth center for the youth. And we hear that all the time, you know, we. Run on our youth and things like that, but also we have laws in place that we need to adhere to, you know, because. The tariff ordinance is a, it's a law of our tribe. And I did recommend that. You know, if we wanna start waiving. Fees for these things that we build in our communities, because, you know. Um, the law does hinder us from doing that, waiving fees, so we should. Uh, make amendments to the tariff ordinance in the future because. You know, it, it doesn't look good when we're waiving fees. And then we have other contractors, other districts are gonna be coming forward. This gets out there. And they're gonna start wanting. You know, they're gonna bring it up cuz it did happen before and, and it's not fair when we do this for one, and then. It happens, they come forward and wanting a waiver. So we're gonna continually do this. So I, you know, I would recommend that we start amending that tariff ordinance to. To, uh, for projects like this in our community. So I just wanted to put that out there because the fees do come, some of it comes back to our districts. And, um, that's the questions I, I got. When you guys are waiving them, you know, does it affect our district? Funds, and it does, thank you.
Con, Councilman Randall?
How, how much is that, I mean, I'm gonna say, um. My chat would, uh. Jackie says it's an ordinance, so how does it affect the? Funding? Because it is an ordinance, so. You're gonna have to stay with it.
I'll let him respond and then. Go ahead.
No, I, I believe it's roughly somewhere around eighty thousand. Which. Wouldn't be much to, that would be going back to each of our districts. However. You know, as, as a leader. You know, wh- what do we put forth? The most, our, our. Mental health of our children or money? You know, like I stated, some of you guys have two or three gymnasiums. Some of you guys have the ability to. To have gatherings for your families. So you're okay in your communities. Probably every single one of you have. Buildings in your, your districts and your communities. Our, ours don't. And every time a little money comes to the districts. You know, Won Dini gets left out, and it's, it's always been that way. And I've always been advocate for Won Dini because of that. And right now, what's running rampant in Won Dini? Is bootlegging, meth abuse. Child abuse, child neglect, everything you could name of. That ain't good for our children. And for me. You know, this building's a big thing cuz it's more than money. You know, it's, it's a safety net for our children, there's no after-school programs there. There's no job opportunity in Won Dini. The only place for, um, jobs in Won Dini community is a post office. And, and the Head Start building there. And then there's nothing. And it's the second largest community in my district. And they don't, they don't have a store, they don't have a clinic, they don't have a school. Nothing. Like I said, these churches, even them, they close the door to our community members. So to me, it, it is a big deal. And, and I understand you guys are probably worried about the, the, the crumbs that will come from the. The tariff fees, but for me, it's bigger than that. It's about the mental health of our children and, and everything else, and, and. It's not the first time we waived these fees on, on buildings, we just did that to some of these community buildings, these bigger projects. That were six million dollars. This one. At most is gonna be one point eight million dollars. And, like I said, every bit of it. We need to put back in this building so we could have a good place. You know, for, for our kids, so, so to me, that's what it's about, i- it ain't about money. It's about the mental health and, and having a place for our, our families.
Go ahead, Councilman Greenwall, and then.
I could see, I could see from both ways, I mean, tariff fees are. Very important for our districts. At the same time. I see four, four point seven large. Walk out the door to. A non-travel member and one of our tribal members who are greedy. Over greed, and our districts probably didn't get a penny of anything in the last few years. And I see Gar's point about his community building. And he, and they do need something out there, and so. I do get both sides of it. I'm frustrated because four point seven walked out the door without our knowledge. And should never happen again, and when's the last time our districts got any tariff money? While these two people were going out, buying vehicles and living a lavish life, whatever they were doing. Nobody was on top of that, so that walked out the door, and did our districts get any? Tariff fees in the last few years? So for this one, I, you know, I'm kinda leaning towards. You know, the Won Dini District, they do need this building, and. When we do take fees out of it, it makes that portion, they gotta cut from somewhere. To make that happen, so I just wanted to share that, I mean, the big scheme of things.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear?
I wanna. It's not often that I agree with Councilman Steele. However, I do agree with, uh, Councilwoman Sears that. There does need to be some amendments to our tariff ordinance. Uh, because we do, we do need to require tariff fees. But when we do consider what Councilman Greenwald just stated. There are two individuals who walked away with a large amount of money. That, that caused a, a major detriment across our communities. That really could have benefited our youth in a big way. And when they, when we sit back and hear how lavish they were living. And you see, um, in our districts. How, how much our youth. Are living in, in, in poverty. And how we could utilize that funding to help in some small way. I don't believe Garfield is asking for a lot of, a lot from us, because if you do the math, that equates to around two thousand per district. And so in this instance, I would, I could support a motion like this. However, we do need to amend that ordinance to consider areas like this that will support our districts. When it comes to something in this regards, because companies that do come in are going to ex- expect the same expectations. And that's something that we can't allow. However, with this instance. I know that in Won Dini, it's something that is needed. And that's my comment, however. Um, I would encourage the, the council to look into the ordinance to amend, amend that. For instances like this, in this situation, I do support it. Uh, because he's not asking for a lot, but what the previous tariff representatives did affected our tribes. I- in a big way, and that's something that we should never have allowed happen or slip, you know, through us, our fingers. So in this case, I do support it, and I also agree with Councilwoman Sears that we do need to amend that ordinance as well. Thank you.
Councilman Randall?
You're drawing too many things into the context of the. The motion, but it's not, uh. That anybody disagrees with what's going on in Mannersen. It is an ordinance, and when the, I think a lot of people don't under- understand is that when a contract is offered. This tariff fee is already factored in that bid. So, in the essence, in that bottom picture, that contractor walks away. With that money, that four percent money. And you don't even realize it that, that way, so, that, that is part of the bid, that is part of the process. So, you're not, we're not hurting ourselves, we're just misunderstanding who we're hurting, we're not hurting. We, again, are hurting ourselves, cuz that money's supposed to stay with the, in that tariff fee, it stay on the tribe. Cuz that contractor already factored that in his bid. He knows he has to pay that. That, that, that's, that's what it is in ordinance.
You, you know, Councilman Randall, and I know you guys went on a training in, uh. In Las Vegas on this. And, uh, how strong, we're the only tribe, right, you, maybe you should have. Discuss some of that training you went to. And, uh, how strong, we're the only tribe, right, you, maybe you should have discussed some of that training you went to. And how it, it does, waiving fees do affect the tariff, um. Uh, program, uh, when we waive those fees, we shouldn't be touching it because. We can be building, making our own manufacturing company, things like that, training and all that, that's what. The, the four percent is like he's saying, is already added to that. So it really doesn't benefit us when, when we waive them. So I just wanted to mention that. Um, yes, go ahead.
Chair, can we just run a motion?
I, I was.
We can discuss that at another time in a committee meeting and make.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Councilman Londonman. Secretary call for the vote?
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Ronald Randall?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior? Bold Little White Man?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Troy Little?
No.
Lyle Weston?
No.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Gillian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Richard Greenwall Senior?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
David Poyer? Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Don Regospare?
Yes.
David Kelly?
No.
Garfield Steele?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
No.
Thirteen yes, seven no, motion carried. Okay, it's one o'clock here, so, uh, we're gonna break for lunch, be back at two sharp. Oh, I'm sorry, let's do a meal pair before we go. Uh, let's see. Councilman Greenwall, can you give us a meal pair?
People gotta understand, just the one basic content, that contractor keeps that money in his pocket, go to his house, he's got that.
Oh, we'll be long. So, one o'clock now, we'll see you at two.